Good evening and welcome to the City of Topeka's Planning Commission meeting. We are a commission appointed by the mayor and city council to plan for the orderly growth and development of the community, to hold public hearings, and to make recommendations to the governing body on planning items. Please note that the governing body rules state that public hearings for planning cases shall be conducted solely by the Planning Commission. No additional public hearings will be conducted by the governing body. Tonight's cases are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the governing body next month. Agendas can be found on topeka.org. Some of tonight's cases involve public hearings. For those cases, the procedure will be as follows. First, the planning staff will summarize the case. Next, we will hear from the applicant or their representative. Then, we will receive public testimony. Comments are limited to four minutes. For agenda items that do not involve public hearings, public comment is allowed provided that the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Comments are limited to four minutes. Finally, at the end of regular business, the commission will entertain general comment regarding matters relating to the commission business, provided that the person has signed up on Topeka Speaks or has notified staff prior to 5:00 p.m. today. Again, comments are limited to four minutes. Amanda, please take the roll.
Mr. Lally?
Here.
Ms. Nelson?
Here.
Ms. Herron?
Here.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Cow?
Here.
Mr. Nager?
Here.
Ms. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Hanon?
Here.
We have enough for a quorum.
Next is any consideration of our minutes from the last meeting. I do know that we received a public comment with a couple corrections on our minutes of spelling of name and things like that. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two corrections if I could. I need to be listed in the members present at the meeting if the staff, if Amanda would add that. And then on page four of the minutes, the first paragraph, paragraph at the top of the page, the fourth line, it talks about, said, "I would be delighted if," meaning the proposal, "resulted in five or 10 new duplexes in Topeka." I believe the testimony was that, or my statement was that, "five or 10 new duplexes a year," or "over my lifetime," whichever comes first. So, but I'd like to have it say, "five or 10 new duplexes a year."
All right. Any other things that people caught? Then I would take a motion to approve with all those edits that we talked about.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead and take the vote.
Ms. Hanon?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Minutes with corrections?
Pass.
Next is any declaration of a conflict of interest or ex parte communications that were had by any members of the commission. Seeing none, we will move on to our action items. Action item A is P-2508, preliminary and final plat for Ardmore Walk addition. Turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a preliminary and final subdivision plat for Ardmore Walk addition. The property is located along the north side of Southwest 45th Street. It's about 1,000 feet west of Burlingame, lying between Lakeside Drive and Burlingame Road. The property is contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Topeka. Property owner has consented to annexation. Annexation is being analyzed and considered concurrently with this application tonight. That is required to connect into city's Topeka utilities. The purpose of the plat is to subdivide the 25.28 acre tract of land into 42 lots, public roads, and stormwater detention to be construed, all to be constructed in three phases. As you can see, the phasing on the plat will begin in the southwest corner of the site, continuing northerly and then towards the southeast corner of the site. The applicant civil engineer provided a stormwater management plan to the city of Topeka that is still under review by the city of Topeka Department of Utilities. The plat does dedicate four unbuildable tracts as easements for stormwater detention to allow for compliance with the city's stormwater quality and quantity standards. Infrastructure improvements, including sanitary sewer and water, are planned to be made and financed by the developer. As I mentioned, analysis of the cost effectiveness of the annexation is conducted as part of the hearing of this plat. Staff is recommending approval. Staff is open for any questions you may have, and the applicants are here to take your questions as well. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Annie, thank you for the report. Could I ask you on the heading of conformance to the comprehensive plan?
Sure.
That paragraph there, it talks about why tier three properties are not suitable for annexation, I guess, absent the existence of the core infrastructure services. And then it goes on to say that the city's going to be analyzing sewer and water. But I don't want to put words in your mouth, but would the staff's position that development of the property with the planned infrastructure would make it, make the property in conformance, inconformance with the comprehensive plan?
Yes, with the planned infrastructure, it is in conformance to the plan.
Okay. Is it possible to add that wording to the end of that paragraph, just show, have the record show that staff's finding is subject to that, the construction of those improvements, that it would be conformance?
We can add that before it goes on to council.
Okay. And if that's agreeable to the Planning Commission.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions. Can you go back one slide? What's the blue on that specific image?
The blue on that is the floodway.
All right.
The property to the east is in the floodway.
All right. So that's, those vacant lots are going to be held for stormwater retention?
That, no, no. That is the property to the east of them. This is outside of their tract. A portion of the floodway does cross, does cover their site in the northern, northern section that will be part of stormwater detention.
All right. And then, I already talked to staff a bit about this, but I did notice that the neighborhood meeting notes were generated by AI. I don't have a concern of that just automatically, but my understanding is that staff has generally looked at that and it is what the AI, or what the AI described is roughly what happens.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure that we have that somewhere.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Any motion? Or, I'm sorry, I'm skipping around. Not motion. Next is a presentation by the applicant. So is the applicant or a representative of the applicant here?
Joshua West, with SBB Engineering. I am West Grounds Developmenter. And I'll take it.
Questions if there are any. We have nothing further to add.
Any questions for the applicant?
So, the adjacent landowner had a comment, so I just want to kind of address that openly so it can be heard and addressed. So, I think, and I was trying to find it real quick, but he had some issues with stormwater runoff, you know, making sure that he wasn't going to have any additional stormwater onto his property. And he's put a lot of work into making sure, you know, addressing stormwater issues on his property. It's in a flood zone. I didn't realize that until just now, but.
Could you just speak to that so it's all open, how you're going to address that?
I can. I left my board back there, so.
Oh, perfect.
I received a copy of that online comment, so I ran through and just highlighted a couple of the major issues, like you said. He speaks about concerns with accelerated erosion in the channel, stream banks sloughing off, and having trouble maintaining. That drainage area is almost 6,000 acres upstream of that, almost nine square miles, and ours is a very small portion of that. Most of those issues he describes in the upper portion of that can be attributed to just the enormous drainage area, lower, which includes the airport. So there's a lot of impervious area upstream generating all of these flows. When you did see that large floodway area on his property, there's a lot of water that runs through there. In particular, so for our site, we provided a stormwater management plan to the city, so we are providing a detention basin on site, which we have to reduce our post-development flows to pre-development flows, so we're not increasing any of the flows generated on the site. He had concerns about buffers in between the houses and, if I can hold this up, and his property. His property is about right here and over here. You can see the center line of the channel as it winds through here. So we're reserving a large portion of that east side for stormwater management tracts. So he is getting that separation. There's only a small amount that's actually buildable. They'll have housing on it over in that area. The detention basin will be right here and will discharge to an existing channel, so he had a concern about stormwater flowing, or more flowing across his property. It'll be discharging to the same area and to an existing channel. I think, I don't believe he saw something that was color-coded like this, so I think he'd be happy with how this looks. He had a comment about traffic, concerns about accidents on the adjacent road, 45th Street. We did provide a traffic impact study, which was approved through the city in April, I believe. The, so they were looking at the additional traffic that would be generated, which would be out on 45th Street. So in the conclusions, we, it was just a minor to moderate increase. There was 37 vehicle trips added in the AM peak hour, and then 48 trips in the PM peak hour, which is not, not very much at all, considering that, I think the, the actual traffic now is about 2,500 or so for, on a daily basis. So as far as developments go, a small subdivision is a minor impact, as opposed to commercial or industrial. I can't speak to the accidents on 45th Street. It's a very low limit, speed limit. It's 35 miles an hour, so I think that's just local traffic and people speeding because they went to down there. So, I believe those were the major, major comments on there, unless you had?
Nope. I appreciate you being ready and addressing those. Thanks.
Thanks to Annie for sending that to me.
Any other questions? Thank you. Then next we'll go to any public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to this specific item? Again, seeing if there's any member of the public who would like to speak to this item. Seeing none, I will close the public comment and move on to discussion by commissioners. No discussion, so any potential motion?
I'm sorry, before we go into the discussion, I'd like to ask, Willie, the, ensure the resident expert on this, are you satisfied with the explanation? Is it responsive to the concerns of the neighboring property owner?
Yeah, so, for sure. I saw the comments. I think, I think it's always good to address the comments. They're required to address stormwater by law, by code, and so I knew it would be done. And then I saw the plat, the preliminary plat, and saw the stormwater areas, and I kind of knew the answer to the question, but I wanted it to be a kind of public, and I want to make sure that the adjacent landowner was heard, so I think it's good.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Cow?
If you're ready for a motion.
Yeah?
Move approval, subject to the conditions set out in staff report.
And the one edit that you mentioned earlier? With the one edit that you mentioned earlier?
Yeah.
Second.
All right. Motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we are good to go ahead and vote.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Hanon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next is associated with that same item that we just went through. It's the, any potential annexation for Ardmore Walk. So I'll turn it over again to staff.
Commissioners, I'll handle this one. There's a little bit of discussion about the annexation through Ann Marie's review of the subdivision, but let's get into a little more detail. So overall, about 25 acre property, it's adjacent to the city currently. It was brought up, the graduation from tier three to tier one. Those tiers have to do with the city's urban growth area. And, long story short, tier one are, is the city basically. Tier two are areas that are essentially ready for annexation. So that dark color on that map, that would be a tier two. That project, when it, when it comes before you at some point, will be, be straight tier two. This one graduates from tier three to tier two or tier one due to the fact that the services are all there, the five required services. So just as a reminder, that's fire, police, water, sewer, and, shoot, what's that one? Oh, traffic, and traffic. Boy, it's been a little bit since I've talked about this. So that's all available, and by available in this instance, meaning the developer will extend some of those infrastructure on their own dime. So the city's not involved with that. So again, a 40 lot subdivision that's being proposed. And just a little bit about process here, so the Planning Commission's not part of state law with regards to annexations. We involve the Planning Commission through our land use and growth management plan. Where properties are 10 acres or larger, and your review is based on compliance with the land use and growth management plan, or consistency with the land use and growth management plan. So that is your review. After, after you make that determination, then we'll fall back onto the actual state, state law regarding annexations. So since this is contiguous, and since the property owner has consented to annexation, the governing body can approve these types of annexations by just approving an ordinance. There's no other governing bodies involved with that kind of annexation. So with that, commissioners, I will recommend that the project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? For annexations, we still go through the presentation and public comment? Is that right?
You can ask if there's people that want to speak on it.
Then next will be any presentation by the applicant? No? All right. And then any public comment, anyone who would like to speak to this specific item? Seeing none, I'll move on to any discussion by commissioners. Any motions?
I would move to a second.
All right. Go ahead, Amanda.
Ms. Hanon?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson? Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Ms. Herron?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right. Next is item, action item C, which is potential text amendments regarding multifamily housing. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commission. So, in the memo, this is in the agenda packet, staff is recommending that you conduct a public hearing tonight, close the public hearing, discuss amongst yourselves, and table any action to a future meeting where you can comment specifically. Gives you some time to consider the comments made by people that want to participate tonight. There's been mention that occasionally I see comments about lack of public engagement. Just to reiterate, the public engagement on this item has been robust. We've had at least five or six meetings with neighborhoods in which staff participated in those meetings. We conducted a survey. We received four in five responses. Most of those responses came from central Topeka neighborhoods. The Planning Commission met on this for discussion in June, met again in August, and now we're holding a hearing tonight. And, and we've had questions, we've responded to questions, and we've had a lot of written comments. So that's what the process has been to date. Another thing that I'll address is that this is not a proposed change to the zoning map. It's a proposed text amendment to the zoning code. So, not really an upzoning, that's not what I would call it. It's an amendment to the zoning code, which the city occasionally does amend its zoning code and its municipal code. So, the current zoning regulations prohibit duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes in the single-family residential districts, specifically the R1 and R2 districts. The Plan Commission Housing Committee, which is a subset of the Planning Commission, revised their recommendation such that duplexes, what they're recommending now, currently, is to allow duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes by conditional use permit. The CUP process involves notification of neighboring property owners, public hearing by Planning Commission, and the decision by the governing body. So this matrix, which is in your packet, in the memo, it includes all the potential alternatives for a text amendment that provides more flexibility for duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes. As an example, if the recommendation is that duplexes be allowed by right with special standards, triplexes and quadplexes by CUP, but with addition of CUP guidelines, the recommendation is for option A1 with option A7 together. The Housing Committee's current recommendation is option B1, which is highlighted in yellow in the, on the table. Drafts of special standards and CUP guidelines, if that is the choice of the Planning Commission, are attached for consideration. They're attached to the memo. So as proposed by the committee, the amendment to the zoning code would be to this table that's on this slide. As you can see, the two types of land uses are highlighted in yellow, and what is proposed is there be a C in each one of those cells to indicate that a conditional use permit would be required. Something to consider is that there are more than 20 uses other than single-family dwellings that are allowed currently, or allowed subject to specific standards in the R1 and R2 districts. Those include, but are now limited to, a group home, up to eight residents and two staff, a daycare type one, which is essentially an in-home daycare operation, religious assembly, and community garden. There are more than 20 uses other than single-family dwelling that are allowed by conditional use permit currently in the zoning code in R1 and R2 districts. Assisted living, six or more persons, home care type two, which is really a group home, up to 12 persons, a community center, a daycare facility type two, which is a type of daycare operation that is not an in-home daycare, tends to be a larger operation, or a transmission and communications tower. Again, these are five listed, there are more than 20. Okay, so this table on these two slides compares the conditional use permit process to the rezoning process. And I won't go over every one of these, but I think what the takeaway here is that the process is essentially the same. There are some key differences, but the process is the same. It involves an application with a fee paid upfront. It involves a neighborhood information meeting prior to the public hearing. It requires a notice and public hearing by the Planning Commission, and it has to go to the governing body for decision. What's important about this, too, is that unlike rezoning, approvable conditional use permit does not amend the zoning map. And a conditional use permit is tied to a development plan, which includes a site plan if it is new construction, for example, whereas rezoning is typically not bound by any particular development plan. So if someone was to apply for rezoning for a duplex, and let's say it was rezoned to M1, that means that all the rights associated with M1 zoning would carry through, would be available to the property owner, whereas a conditional use permit would limit it to whatever that conditional use permit is specifically for. It's also notable that in both cases, citizens may file a protest petition, and if there is enough protest petitions filed, it could require a three-quarter governing body vote. So this is, this is a slide that just shows you an area of North Topeka East, and shows you in this case, there are, in this area, there are some vacant lots up there, vacant sites. Those are shown outlined in red. And so what, what this indicates is, if someone today were to apply for rezoning on one of these vacant sites for a duplex, it would mean that if we're going to rezone it, it would be like a spot zoning. Spot zoning is not illegal. It's okay if it's supported by the comprehensive plan and other policies, but it's not really a desirable path. It's not a good vehicle for approving this land use, in staff's opinion. Also, something that's typically required with a conditional use permit application, again, is a site plan showing building location, parking and access and drives, and other building plans. Okay, so there have been several issues raised by citizens about the proposal. One thing I'll point out is that I would say most of these were raised when the committee's recommendation was to allow duplexes by right, subject to standards, but require a conditional use permit for triplexes and quadplexes. With the change in the recommendation that all of those uses require a conditional use permit, a lot of these issues, I believe, are resolved. I will, and these are all addressed in the memo, I will just focus on a couple of them if I could. So one of the comments that we've heard a lot is that they should be prohibited in historic districts. The problem with restricting them in historic districts, first of all, that by itself does not address the concerns by some of the neighborhood residents. For example, College Hill, the historic district in the College Hill neighborhood comprises about one-sixth of the neighborhood. So it wouldn't really address those concerns. The other, the other thing that is very important, it kind of addresses a theme that runs through a lot of the comments, is that having different land use regulations for individual neighborhoods within the same zoning district is not. within the same zoning district is not equitable, and it really risks being arbitrary and without a rational basis. Because what would you base that on? There would have to be some extensive study, some analysis that would tell you what to base that on, which neighborhoods to choose. So, it's not recommended that that be done. Historic districts really are about physical changes to buildings and property. They're not about land use. If, if someone wants to convert a home in a historic district to a duplex, there are likely to be physical changes to the building. For example, it's likely to require an external door, an additional exterior door. That's going to be reviewed by the Landmarks Commission or Landmark Commission staff through what's called a certified local government review. I want to just repeat something that addresses that issue of treating neighborhoods differently. Zoning regulations should be equally applied to similarly zoned property. Deciding which neighborhood should be selected for the proposed code change is really complicated. It may require the creation of new overlay districts, and is likely to result in an inequitable treatment of neighborhoods. Something that I want to emphasize is the conditional use permit process is inherently not a one-size-fits-all approach. It's very much based on context. The evaluation of a conditional use permit application really looks closely at the context. That's why it's called a conditional use permit, and conditions can be applied to address issues that arise because of potential incompatibility issues. So, with that, just to repeat, the instructions to the Planning Commission are to hold and close the public hearing, discuss the committee's recommendation and comments and suggestions from the participants, and to consider the options. And then, at the October 20th meeting, or the meeting you decide, you select, discuss and vote on a recommendation, and state the basis for the recommendation. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Cowp?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Like, first of all, it's, it's a very comprehensive memo and appreciated. I think it's well, well, well done. And I would imagine that if anything comes out of this process and set on the City Council, that City Council will look at this memo with some importance. So, with that in mind, there's just a couple of things I wanted to ask you to, in terms of cleanup. There's reference throughout here to the Special Committee on Housing, and under the bylaws, it is the standing committee for housing. So, could you make that editorial change, just so? And I, I mean, people see it in the minutes and other documents, it's a standing committee. I want to make sure there's not any confusion about, you know, any thought that there's two different committees out there. The second thing I wanted to mention, under Special Committee Recommendation, or what will be changed to Standing Committee Recommendation, include the R3 zoning district in there. And I'm, I'm aware, as you are, that the, the R3 district is a, is a one-tenth of 1% of the, of the land area or the residential acreage in the city, so it's a real minor. Frankly, I don't know why we have an R3 district. But, the discussion that the, that the committee has had, the Housing Committee has had, has consistently been limited to the R1, R2. I understand the need to, to include R3 along the way, not just as a matter of convenience, but as a matter of logic to, there's no logical reason to exclude R3, but it just has not been part of our discussion. So, could you edit the memo in a way to show that, that the staff's position is that if, if you go forward with R1 and R2, then R3 needs to be stapled into that somehow?
Okay.
Okay. The last thing I wanted to mention is that on the bottom of the first page, you talk about the, and you've already referenced it, the outreach that, that staff and the, and the Housing Committee did. And you mentioned three individual neighborhoods, High Crest, North Topeka East, and College Hill. I think you need to add Elmhurst in there. That was the meeting at the Public Library that was also attended by a large number of folks from the Potwin Place, and I think College Hill as well, but it was an Elmhurst, an Elmhurst Association meeting, so. And I, and I appreciate your, the emphasis, and I think it'd be important to the City Council, if this goes forward, that, that there was significant effort to reach out to the community over a period of, of months and months. So, with that, thank you for the, for the memo.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for staff? Not seeing any. I believe the next step would be the actual public hearing? Is that right? All right. Then, yes, we will move on to the public hearing. So, if there are any members of the public who would like to speak on this, you can just come forward. Like I mentioned at the beginning, there's a four, four-minute time limit. There's a yellow light and one buzzer that will go off to give you a one-minute warning, and then the red light and another buzzer will go off to tell you that your time is concluded.
All right. I thank you for that. Appreciate it. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to have this time to express some, my, share my thoughts with you, at least, you know, a small list of them anyway. And I also do want to thank you for your amendment. I, I, it's good to know that that's what we're, that's still what's on the table. I wasn't quite sure, but it's good to know to have that cleared up. And we really do appreciate the amendment. It is a step forward. But even having said that, I, you know, I think I have to say that I, I still think it's, it's flawed, in that the CUP process really has a very limited notification requirement that doesn't come anywhere close to reaching out to a total neighborhood. And I know I, and I think my neighbors, I think many of the people you've heard from over the last month or so, see zoning and upzoning, even upzoning that's conditioned on a CUP process, as a neighborhood-wide issue and a concern. And so, and I know there's a state statute involved here, which you can't readily change, if maybe, if at all, but that doesn't mean that the notification isn't limited and that we aren't concerned about that. I just, I just wanted to say that. Thank you, but. I, you know, I also want to say that I think this is all happening pretty quickly. I know that you've met with neighborhoods, you came to Elmhurst, which is the neighborhood I represent, and you've been elsewhere. But, you know, I think, just really quickly, I think some of those, probably those meetings caught neighborhoods off guard. I was at the College Hill meeting. I, you know, I don't, you know, I don't live in College Hill, but I just had heard about this, I showed up, and I was just completely, almost caught off guard, because I had no idea the city was working on something like this, proposing it. I, I think that's probably true for other neighborhoods, too. But I want to say that I think it's happening quickly, because people who, who are buying homes, you know, make long-term commitments, 15, 20, 30-year mortgages, those kinds of long-term commitments. And I think when you change the rules like this without quite a bit of input from neighborhoods, that it shows, I mean, you know, with all due respects, it kind of ignores that long-term financial and, and other kinds of commitments that people who are buying homes make. You know, and I think maybe that's particularly true if there's kind of a lack of evidence out there that suggests that what you're proposing is going to create the results that you seek. And we all, I think, seek to have better housing and more affordable housing for all of Topeka. But, yeah, it just makes me wonder, you know, given those things, why do we pursue this? You've seen from lots of residents who are concerned about this. We've heard from several people, including Jerry Palmer and his research, that the evidence is, is somewhat weak. So, I do, I would just recommend that we slow this down, hit the brakes, as some people have said, spend more time with neighborhoods. You know, when we did downzoning two, three decades ago, there was lots of time spent with neighborhoods for downzoning. Now, we're upzoning, we're upzoning via CUP, I think it deserves just as much time with individual neighborhoods. You know, and I, again, with all due respect, I don't think that's happened. You know, I, you know, even the housing study recommends that when, when making changes to resolve our housing crisis, that you seek lots of input from neighborhoods. You know, I think that's critical. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this one?
And I do have a hand. Good evening, everyone. My name is Susan Duffy. I'm a resident of College Hill, have been there for, well, since 1987. I've been down here before to talk. What's being passed around is some research that was done by a Realtor about the houses sold between August of 2023 and August 15th of 2025 in the College Hill neighborhood. And let me take a moment to go to your executive summary of the study, page four. The challenge, and I'm quoting, "qualified households have difficulty finding suitable homes priced between $120,000 and $225,000." The price point is met by existing homes. With the average sale price for existing homes, $146,500, and that was from 2019 data. This is the most recent data. It shows there is a preponderance of homes sold in College Hill, the average price being $150,000, needing that middle housing that you seek. Very few are over on the other side. I also have that information for Elmhurst as well. Their average price of, of sold homes was $126,775. So, very, very affordable. Couple of other things I want to talk about is the overlay district. I will tell you, in College Hill, we'll be looking at every avenue we can to try and stave off this sort of action. And in fact, when we had, I believe it was the Rosin folks come out and do a survey back in 2018, they were helpful in that regard, and we need to pursue that. Also, I will let you know that we've, we've had people try to change our zoning to establish lodges on Boswell and College Street as recent as five years ago, and we were able to successfully get that stopped. It was college students, and they were turning two very nice homes into meeting places, back-to-back, so the backyards met. Mr. Lally is very familiar with notification of neighborhoods as the Huntun Project, and the number of people that came out to talk about Huntun was huge, every meeting. Y'all can do the same when we talk about neighborhood changes. There were 85 neighborhoods who participated in National Night Out. Eighty-five neighborhoods. We are going to reach out to those 85 neighborhoods, we're going to contact them and ask them that we should be meeting together, together. Those neighborhoods do not know this proposal exists. When we started calling the NIAs, they weren't quite aware of it either, and I'm, I was surprised. So, I do think there's a better way to communicate, pump the brakes, slow this down, and one-size does not fit all. We are so diverse in our neighborhoods, and I believe our ordinances should reflect the power of the diversity of what this great city has to offer. And frankly, this is a disappointment. Thank you.
I'm Toni Stewart, and I live in Potwin Place. And if there are no differences, why are we changing them? That makes no sense. If the, if the two zonings are the same, why, why are they called the same? You're, you're, and if you are changing them, why are you changing them? We're not happy with the recommendations. No, we're not happy with it. Go back, go to each neighborhood, find out what they want, the people who live in them. The neighbors need to vote on it, not a group of 13. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else?
We came to decide you should go. Okay. Hi, my name is Jolene Gravel. I am a resident for 34 years of Collins Park. I'm here to call a spade a spade. I'm new to zoning, kind of. I used to be commentator for City Commission in Wichita, saw a lot of zoning, but it's been a while. And I feel that you value honest and meaningful citizen input, and somebody who's tried to give that to you and understand the process, I think you could do a better job. I think there's two fronts you need to look at: citizen involvement and the proposal definition, and, and public availability. I understand you think this has been a robust process. It has not, from where I've felt, been a robust process. When I first got involved this summer, nobody in my neighborhood knew this process was going on. Nobody in three other neighborhoods that I inquired of knew this process was going on. Everybody I talked to about it gave me the same response, deep concern and being uninformed. So, I don't see how, I think it's disingenuine to say the process is, has been representative of the public input. I was told that a lot about the housing study when I first got involved, and how much citizen input there was in that, and I think all of us feel that that was a disingenuine statement. I would echo the, the suggestion that Commissioner Lally help understand about postcards and how that can turn people out for events, because we were very happy with the turnout on the Huntun Project, so we know the city can do it. We just wish it had been done in this process. I want to stand here in opposition, not only to duplex conversions by right or by CUP, but in response to anything that results from this process, because I have a fear that has been confirmed, in part, by a statement from Commissioner Cowp himself in a video presentation on, it must have been the June meeting, I thought it was the July meeting, where he said the process was, quote, "to reduce," tell me if I'm wrong here, Jim, "to reduce burdensome regulations on developers," a process he called zoning liberalization. That has been my concern from the beginning and my feeling from the beginning, that this has been designed to meet the needs of developers, not to increase housing affordability. And I hope that's not the case, but it sure feels like that's the case from where we all sit and what we've observed. I really feel like there's been an attempt to minimize the citizen's input, both in value and intensity, and we just are not happy with the way this has turned out, and we believe, I believe we are unified in our belief that Topeka is capable of meeting our city's zoning challenges as they have been meeting them in the past and as they evolve naturally. We're just, we want you to know this, we understand the process is always imperfect, but this imperfect process has accomplished one thing. You've unified the neighborhoods of, of Topeka, and we are now committed to ongoing and watchful citizenry. We are united and committed to ongoing collaboration and communication in order to provide more meaningful input and to do our part to help our, our trusted city government do its job. Thank you.
I'm Allison Oliver, 201 Greenwood, Potwin Place, and yes, I'm back. We've continued our conversation concerning the proposed upzoning of single-family residential neighborhoods in the city of Topeka, and the answer to your recommendation is no. No to an arbitrary recommendation to the City Council that would allow duplexes, triplexes, or quadplexes in our residential, single-family-zoned neighborhoods. No to neighborhoods being left out of the conversation regarding a long-term plan that will for will forever change the layout of our city, a change that directly impacts our neighborhoods, their diversity, and their vibrancy. So what will we say yes to? We say yes to including every neighbor and neighborhood in the city planning. Yes to neighborhood revitalization. Yes to quality housing. Yes to vacant residential and commercial properties being viable housing. Yes, yes, yes. We have a list of ideas to share with each of you. We have ideas to make Topeka a place to call home. As neighbors and residents, the current zoning has brought us together, and it's reminded of, we have a voice. Guess what? We're starting a neighborhood coalition, and as neighbors of the city of Topeka, we are coming together to share information, resources, support, and solutions. We are not going to sit in silence. We're going to keep this conversation going. We will be here. We will keep coming back. We are going to bring you our concerns, our solutions, and we are going to be a part of growing our city.
Any other members of the public?
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Steve Sanford. I'm a member of the Westboro Homeowners Association. And as you can tell from the, the comments already made, we have been discussing our concerns amongst the central Topeka neighborhoods, and we wanted to share a few of them tonight. Because the other speakers have spoken so eloquently on, on most of these issues, I want to just turn my attention a little bit, Mr. Chairman, if I may, to, to the staff's memo. I would call your attention specifically to page eight, the second footnote where staff suggests that the public comments in response to the Housing Committee's earlier recommendations to allow single-family residential districts by special standard, and, and suggesting that comments at our last meeting were not clear in terms of where the neighborhood stood on the revised issue. And I would just say that, just to remind you, you revised the proposal minutes before you opened the floor to public comment. So it should not be surprising that the public comments were not directly on point as to that issue. We've submitted detailed written documents, and we distributed them here tonight. We do note that Westboro's comments from the earlier meeting were not included in tonight's packet. So in order to make certain that you have a comprehensive view of our, our position not only on upzoning subject to COP, but also on upzoning by right, upzoning by administrative regulation, and upzoning by COP, we've included our past information for you to consider as well. So you have 13 pages of detailed documents. So if our position isn't clear, let me, let me restate it here tonight one more time. We're opposed to upzoning in any form, by right, by administrative process, by CUP. I'd like to speak a little bit towards the idea of public engagement. We have had a fair amount of public engagement. The majority of the public engagement has been organized by the neighborhoods, not by the city. That's disappointing. Many of us in central Topeka are very familiar with how city planning usually happens. We're glad to see Mr. Lawley here tonight. I know others have complimented him. That is a process we endorsed. You've had numerous meetings on the Huntune Project. Postcards have gone out. You've gotten good turnout. You've made experts available to the public. They've answered very detailed questions on traffic studies, et cetera. The engagement here has been much different. And, and we have organized most, most of the recent public engagement, and we, we just think that is the wrong approach. So we would just ask you to reengage with the neighborhoods. We are supportive of the idea that neighborhood by neighborhood makes sense. I think some of you on this commission believe that as well. I saw a recent public conversation that you, Mr. Chairman, had on WIBW where you suggested the same. So we would just say, again, pump the brakes and get more neighborhood by neighborhood engagement on this issue. Thank you.
Any other members of the public?
So, good evening, Commissioners. I'm Shamika Kingsims, representing Historic Old Town Neighborhood Improvement Association. I'm going to take a wild guess that I might be the only NIA that's present tonight, which is really concerning and telling, even though I was able to contact the Citizen Advisory Council Chair to make sure that this meeting and the intention tonight was sent out to my colleagues. I'm just going to keep my comments brief tonight. I'm just utterly disappointed. We all know what my neighborhood is going through right now with the different zoning issue. It just brings me back to how policy can destroy the fabric of community, and specifically when we're talking about unintended consequences. I interned briefly for about a year with the Episcopal Diocese of Kansas. My role was the St. Simon's Community Coordinator. That role came out of a reconciliation effort by the diocese to atone, if you will, for closing a black church, an Episcopal church in my neighborhood, due to integration. So my concern here is that while on the surface this policy effort seems appropriate and timely and thoughtful, the unintended consequences, you will not know until the fabric has started to wear away. And if you go to my neighborhood now, at Bethany Garden, way in the back, there is a piece, a photograph of what we believe was the final pictures of the St. Simon's congregation with white members of the Episcopal Diocese of Kansas at that time in front of their church. It was a vibrant church. It was a church where people were connected. They knew each other deeply, and when that church was closed because of the integration efforts that were so right to do, people lost contact with one another, didn't know where they went, how to find them. And that's a scar that these neighborhoods could potentially carry. That is not your intention, but they bear it. We bear it. So while there is an effort to be thoughtful, I caution you that you might end up on the wrong side of history trying to do the quote-unquote "right" thing. You've been told that this effort is problematic. You've been told that residential, single-family homes stabilize and bring value to our city. Your efforts to change it could cost these communities the thing that they value most, which is each other. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Any other members of the public? One more time, anyone else want to speak on this one? All right. Not seeing any. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and then, I believe, just move on to general, just.
There's staff discussion, comment.
Yeah. More discussion by Commissioners or additional, more discussion by Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, you, do you want to have a, you're going to be discussing this matter at an upcoming meeting in greater detail, right?
I, yeah, I believe that that's the intention, that we would discuss this further in our next meeting, but some discussion now as well.
Well, there was one, just one thing I wanted to mention, because my, my dear friend Jolene Gravel raised it, I think, a little, a few moments ago, about the, the notice area, the 200-foot notice area, which is noted, and she noted, that's consistent with the state statute that required to do notice. The problem with changing that, with extending that, which your city can do, you can go out 500 feet, 1,000 feet, six miles if you want to, but you have to make sure that you don't, or you have to be thoughtful and talk to the city attorney's office about divorcing the notice area from the protest petition area. The, under state law, the 200-foot radius corresponds to the folks who could sign a protest petition. So it's not just notice, it's, it's qualification to be a signature on a protest petition. And there are legal issues raised if you try to expand the protest petition area beyond that 200 feet. So I guess if, if you, if you're receptive to the idea of changing the notice area to increase it, you need to keep in mind that you, I'm retired now, so I don't, I'm not giving legal advice, but you need to take a look at, at the significance of, to distinguish between those folks who get notice and can sign a protest petition and those folks who just get notice, if I muddied the water up enough. Because it's, and it cuts both ways, because I've seen, you know, where the, the notice area, protest petition area can be manipulated in ways that, that are advantageous to a developer, and sometimes they're advantageous to the neighboring property owner. So it's not a, not a black-white issue. So, anyway.
So, uh, we, this is not like a discussion portion. To keep things efficiently going, we have public comments so that people can speak, and then we have discussion here. We are happy to meet with you after the meeting or get contact information or something, but during the meeting, we don't do much back and forth. Is there more discussion from Commissioners?
So, um, city council made some comments along the way that they, they wanted us to engage in a discussion openly about this. We went through the public hearing, and so I think now's a good time that we throw our thoughts out there. And so I'm going to, I'm going to wade in with my thoughts, and I'll just say, I'm, I, I want to hear, I want to hear feedback. I'm not claiming these are the best thoughts, but hopefully we'll, it'll get us, get us started talking. So I thank you, everybody, for coming and for continuing to come. Your comments are really important, and I feel like today's comments were probably the most helpful, honestly. I'm not a big fan of the "not in my backyard," you know, the, when we talk about renters in a negative, negative way, I mean, at one point, I made the comment to this group as like, I would assume most of us were renters at one point. Renters aren't bad. I, I mean, so I appreciate not bringing that, but today was helpful. A few things that I thought were good, good, good for us to chew on is the, is the timing. So the, you know, people make long-term commitments for their homes, and, and so they're playing the long game, and so we just need to be thoughtful about how this affects that long-term play for, for homeowners. Slowing the process was brought up multiple times. I think there might be some wisdom in that. Neighborhood, neighborhood coalition, and then coming back with feedback, I kind of liked that idea. And then just the comment last about unintended consequences, that's the thing that goes through my head a lot, is, we've talked about this, is, is that be the worst thing, is that we're trying to help and it actually hurts, and that, that's what we don't want. So thanks for, for doing that. Again, comments are helpful, and I think of, of all the things that, about the, the comments and everybody coming together is, I, I think if anything, if nothing else comes out of this topic, is that the public has been engaged, and I think that's a big deal. I think more people have read the 2020 housing study now than they ever would have otherwise, and that's a big deal, because I think we're all here, yes, we're concerned about our homes and our neighborhoods, but we're also, there, everybody kind of said it, we're concerned about the housing in Topeka. That's what we're trying to fix, that's what we're trying to help. And so that's a great, that's a great thing. So, so kind of, some of my thoughts, I'll start out with new construction for duplexes. And this would be infill situations or you, you know, you go into a neighborhood where there's open land and you build a new construction duplex, or a scenario would be you have a blighted home, and we know there's plenty of those in Topeka, and you would tear it down and infill there in that location. I think that's a good option. I, I like that option. So just to play out the scenario of how I see that happening, it, at the end of the day, it raises the bar potentially in struggling neighborhoods. There's more homes available, and so the struggling neighborhoods can, can see turnaround because they have some nicer homes that have once replaced, that have replaced the blighted homes. And just as a concept, if you just took the five worst blighted, uninhabited homes in any neighborhood, any neighborhood, and those are removed and turned into duplexes, would that improve the neighborhood? I have a hard time not answering that question, yes. I know that's just one scenario, one example. Would it help the housing in Topeka? I think so. If you take the blighted homes that are in Topeka, what's the likelihood that they're going to be remodeled? Or they're going to be demoed and new is, a new, single-family home's going to be built there? You know, it would, if it was viable economic solution, it would have been done by now, in my opinion. And so what about a home that's not blighted, that's in a more established neighborhood? That's one of the big concerns. I get it. So two thoughts on that. It's my opinion, just when you look at the economics, when you have a blighted home scenario and compare it to having a nicer house in a nicer neighborhood, it's just not going to make sense when you compare the two. I just see that as less of an issue. And then the CUP process, I think, gives the neighborhood the opportunity to have a voice in the process. And so just to say that new construction duplex option, I think, is, is not a bad one. Next was conversions of existing homes to duplexes. So converting a home to a duplex, I think, would be costly. I think it would be a significant amount of money to get it up to code. So to me, the economics don't, don't make it as viable of an option. But, so let's say someone converts a home to a duplex. The first thing that comes to mind as, as you think about it is now you have more parking. So, you know, that single-family home might have had two or three vehicles or whatever, whatever normal is, parked on the street, and then you go, you add a duplex to that same property, the parking may go from three to five or three to six. And so one house on one block, you know, probably manageable. I'm just thinking from a, you know, where I live. But what if it were two or three or four conversions on that same block? And so, you know, I think parking could be an issue if we have too much density, and so maybe we think about the density question that kind of been brought up. And for what it's worth, I assume off-street parking is going to be a requirement for new construction duplexes, and so I see that as a non-issue when we talk about new construction duplexes. And so lastly is tries and quads. So everybody, we're, we're always talking about duplexes, and I think tries and quads don't get as much talk. don't get as much talk, but I think, I think it could be as much or more impactful to folks, and so I just wanna bring it up. You know, imagine a quadplex going up in your neighborhood, would that be impactful? And I understand there's lot size limitations, and so being able to place a quadplex in College Hill's probably very unlikely, I get that, but I just wanna make sure that it's up in the open, that we're talking about it while everybody's listening. I think the economics of a new construction quadplex going up in a more established neighborhood would make more sense than if you did a duplex in that neighborhood. Just to say, I think it's a more potentially viable solution, and so we need to be talking about it. The question is, does it make sense for the neighborhoods? So, perhaps I need a little better understanding of the infrastructure requirements that go into tries and quads, you know, what kind of public utilities that they demand, what kind of off-street parking requirements there are. And again, I'm thinking about, you know, one, you know, may not be that big a deal, you know, but what if there were two or three or four? Can the utilities handle that? What about parking? And so, you know, maybe some density requirements are also part of the conversation. And so, just to kinda summarize, where, where I'm throwing this out for the conversation is, I think new construction duplexes without density requirements, I think are fine, but when it comes to conversions and tries and quads, I think it's worth talking about density requirements. Thanks for listening to that long while.
Other comments or discussion from commissioners? Commissioner Nelson?
So, working with, obviously, a lot of contractors in town, I'm in favor of duplexes by CUP. I'm not in favor of it by right, and I'm glad we changed that. Normally, I don't mean that. Is that better? Okay. I'm in favor of this by CUP. I'm, I am glad we changed it. I do agree with a lot of what was said here tonight, and I also agree with appreciating your guys' comments. It is appreciated, and it does help us with a lot of things. It helps us with understanding your neighborhoods and just what, what your thoughts are in general. I do live in an older neighborhood, and a duplex isn't gonna really affect me a whole lot, I'm gonna be honest. I love the fact that houses aren't all the same. I don't like a cookie-cutter neighborhood. The other thing is, let's, let's be honest, if we can build a duplex, that gives two families' homes. Isn't that what we're supposed to be worrying about? I mean, it is something we need to really look in our hearts and think about. We need to be really considering what we're trying to do with this. I do agree with Commissioner Brooks that maybe, you know, I think we talked about at our last meeting, the quads and the, and the triplexes, that it is a lot, the parking. We have talked about that several times. I, I have to, I have to keep going back to, we're here to provide housing with this. And, you know, I, I love the statistics that were provided today. However, I just bought a house in April, and I, I would love to have found a home in this, you know, 140 to 180 range. I had to go clear up a lot past that, and I didn't wanna do that, but this is one of the neighborhoods I was looking in, and I couldn't find anything. So, I mean, you know, I think we really need to consider that. You know, there's not a lot of empty lots in those areas, so we're not going, probably not gonna see a lot of duplexes, a lot of triplexes, a lot of quad... We're not gonna see that in a lot of these neighborhoods. In my neighborhood, I don't know of any empty lot. I don't know that there's one empty lot in my neighborhood. You know, I think that's, you know, there's a lot of things to be considered, and there's a lot of things that, you know, over the year that we've been discussing this with the committee, I think we've taken a lot of this into consideration. So, those are my thoughts.
Commissioner Cobb?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And this is my last meeting as a planning commissioner, and you've, all have heard on a number of occasions what my thoughts are about the proposal that the Housing Committee put forward. So there's a lot I could say tonight, but most of it would be repetitive, again. I would suggest, as the staff suggested, that this matter be further discussed at an upcoming meeting, whether it's October or whenever, so there's an opportunity to digest some of the information that was received tonight and previously. And I know, for example, I've just had a chance just to briefly look at the submission by, by Bill Feinder that you all received, and maybe no, I don't know if anyone else on the Planning Commission was here, Del Mitres was here when Bill was the, the Planning Director. You know, he's a thoughtful guy, and, and I think what he has written here goes over several pages, it needs to be digested, it needs to be carefully considered. He has a long history in this community, and he was on the, on the 2020 housing study, I believe, Dan, I think that was, that was done under his watch, and he was on the steering committee and...
That's correct.
For, for that. So I hope you give his comments careful consideration, and I say that without even reading it, okay? He's a smart guy. But just one or two other things that just have kinda struck me tonight and throughout this process is, you heard me suggest, request a change in the, in the minutes early on this meeting because of the five or 10 duplexes per year thing. That is, honest to God, that is my expectation, you know, there's gonna be a few duplexes, maybe a triplex or two somewhere, maybe a fourplex somewhere, but this, this, I think, perception that has been allowed to, to be out there and, and played on is that there's gonna be this mad rush to knock down buildings, to convert properties from one to two to three to four dwelling units. It, I think, I think there is a demand there. In fact, I'm very confident that there is a demand there, but I don't see things happening. I don't see developers rushing to Topeka, Kansas to, to make their fortune. You know, what we tried to do, and what we have been, the Housing Committee has been doing since its inception, is trying to find provisions in the Development Code that are unnecessary restrictions upon development, things that can be done away with and, without harming the public interest, and maybe lowering the cost of constructing a house, and some of that cost gets passed on to the homeowner or to the renter that is residing in that, in that structure. But I, I wish, I wish, in a way, I wish the folks were correct in their belief that there's going to be massive changes to, increases to the housing stock. That would be wonderful. You, you've all heard the spiel about the housing study saying, 700, we need to average 720 new housing units a year in order to meet the demand that's out there, you know, that's what they said in 2020, and since then, the numbers have been abysmal, you know, averaging 101 house, new housing units a year the last three complete calendar years. So, you know, we are not meeting the demand that's, that's out there. And the idea that, you know, they call it the missing middle for a reason, you know, there are people that want to live in duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and other multiple, multiple-family dwellings. That's their choice. There was an extensive article in Newsweek that I ran across just today, talking about the national trend that over 40% of, I don't wanna throw the numbers out there, but I'll, but the gist of the story was that the, the generation behind the, Generation X, I guess it is, the numbers of folks in that generation that are choosing rental property over owner-occupied housing is remarkable, and is a dramatic increase over previous generations. That's, that's where we are. There are, there are people who, and the housing study, I'm sorry for going on, Mr. Chairman, you run the red light on me. The, the housing study noted, this is 2020, the housing study noted that there's a significant percentage of renters who were, at that time, in the 100,000 a year range, income range. They could afford housing, owner-occupied housing, should they choose to. They chose rental. You choose rental because you're between jobs, you're going to school, you just don't want the hassle of maintaining a property. People do that, and there's a shortage of, of rental properties in this city. Anyway, I guess for purposes of discussion, since I'm not gonna be up here much longer, what people's expectations are, that if, if the proposal that the Housing Committee put forward is somehow advanced on to the City Council and adopted, you know, what is the expectation as to how many new housing units are gonna pop up, you know, over, over a year, over a couple of years? I'm, I'm sitting here, I swear to you, I just, my honest, my honest assessment and estimate is that we're talking about single digits, maybe small double digits, a year. The other point, so I don't know, I don't know what anybody else thinks, okay? If they think they're hundreds or, or not. But I, I used, one of the comments I gave to my friend Jerry Palmer, is that it seems to me, at times, that this is a tempest in a teapot. I don't mean to diminish or demean anybody that's, that's got sincere concerns about the proposal, but it's like, you know, what, what are we, what's, what's really the expectation of, of what's gonna do? This is a small step towards trying to alleviate a very serious problem in the city of Topeka. So, the other thing, and I just throw it out there, and it'll make people happy, but something I've wrestled with the whole time we've been talking about this topic, is how much of the concern is being raised is because of a structure that's gonna be in a, might be added to a neighborhood, a house that's a little bit bigger than another house, you know, a duplex, or a, maybe the, the ground area's a little bit bigger, maybe it's taller than a twenty... How much concern is there about that structure that'll be in the neighborhood as opposed to the folks that are gonna be living in the structure? And I'd say that with great caution and great reservation, but, you know, you, you look at the emails that the Planning Commission has received over time, there are a number of folks that are very, they're willing to put on, in, in, down in black and white, their, their concerns about renters and landlords as well, you know, that, that there's something wrong with, with renters and something wrong with landlords, and that's, that's disconcerting. That's disconcerting. So, anyway, thank you.
Any other commissioners?
If not, somebody, if somebody can make a motion to defer...
I do have, I do have comments. I just wanted to open up the floor to maybe hear from some commissioners that maybe aren't as vocal, so I just wanted to be respectful and give opportunity. I do very much appreciate just seeing the passion that you all have for your community. I mean, I think it speaks volumes when you drive down the streets and the different events that you all host. I know there was a comment that I made about the responsibility of the Planning Commission to the entire city and not just your neighborhood, and when I said that, it wasn't as a slight or lack of care, but we're looking at all of Topeka. And what is our responsibility is as commissioners to say, how can we create opportunities for housing? One of the comments that I'm so happy to hear, that Commissioner Cobb had hinted at, was rent over buying. One of the things that I've been largely communicated is why I am for this, is that we have a generation of people being taught to rent. You no longer own a movie, you have subscriptions, people are being conditioned to not own anything. And so one of the things that I'm looking at is from a wealth inequality gap, how do we create opportunities for people to walk into wealth opportunities, wealth creation opportunities, is through housing. It's one of the number-one assets that most people have accessibility to. Right now, it's very diminishing, it's not, homeownership isn't as viable because people were living longer, and so there are certain demographics that own a lot more real estate where there's an upcoming generation who will probably most likely rent. And one of the things to take into consideration is that incomes in our area are not going up. And so when you have a supply and demand issue, the supply is gonna go up. Rents are higher in our area than they've ever been before. When you look at what the average median income is for Topeka, someone in Topeka who has quality employment, it's gonna be hard for them to find a property, and rent is, for a lot of people, is almost 50% of their income. For people that are looking to buy, it's actually cheaper to buy a home in Topeka than it is to rent in Topeka. And so when we're looking at this, we're just talking about housing options. Someone could build a duplex, split it in half and sell it. So we're looking at this from a homeownership perspective and also a rental perspective. So what we're talking about is diverse housing. I know that there are duplexes that are built that are $350,000. There could be duplexes that are built that would be sold for $125,000 or whatever the case may be, but giving homeownership and renters and people option in their housing is our goal. Another thing that I want to hit on was unintended consequences. There's a really good book called The Color of Law, and what it talks about is the unintended consequence of zoning, and I don't think a lot of people understand that single-family housing was created with a discriminatory intent. It is, the average, the average square foot of a single-family lot was created to create inequalities in affordability. So I just wanna, you know, encourage, you know, as we're continuing to just educate ourselves and get feedback, to really, you know, there's a YouTube video with the synopsis of it, but really just talks about the history of single-family zoning and the fact that Topeka has eight, over 80% single-family zoning, speaks to a lot of just inconsistencies, inequality around housing, which is another reason why I understand that there are certain circumstances where a duplex or triplex or fourplex just doesn't make sense, which is why, you know, I wasn't for this UOP process, CUP process, but I'm willing to go that way because I understand that it doesn't work for every neighborhood, and I trust city staff and future planning commissioners to look at that and say, hey, is this gonna work versus is it not gonna work? But to have spotted zoning on where this is available, my concern would be that inequalities would persist in that, that the neighborhoods who maybe have a little bit more rentals because they can afford to buy a home, they're going to be provided with some things that just, anyways, I'm gonna try to make this brief, sorry, but anyways, that the inconsistencies could further discriminatory practices that just as a planning commission, we don't wanna continue. Another thing, and this is my last comment in wrapping, I'm wrapping up, there is a property that burned down in Elmhurst, I drive by all the time on my way home, and I know that that house is not gonna be rebuilt, because the cost to rebuild a home is astronomical. So it's probably gonna sit there, burned, and so what's gonna happen to that property? Is someone gonna be able to build the same type? You can't build a 1920s home for what it costs today. But what does make sense is to build a duplex or some type of property there because it's still a beautiful neighborhood, the neighboring houses look amazing, so do we allow for blight, which is 11% of our total housing stock, to continue to be blight, or do we try to create some opportunities for homeowners? And when we're thinking about developers, developers are just the people that'll do it on mass scale, but there's plenty of people that are doing great work that, they're just a, a, a local investor who takes pride in their neighborhood. So I just wanna, you know, speak to all of those voices and those factors, and thank you for giving us time.
Any other discussion, thoughts, comments from commissioners?
All right. I had one more thing. So, at one point in our Standing Committee for Housing, there was a discussion about if it was a new construction duplex that was side-by-side, requiring lot line to be on the party wall, and so there would be some encouragement of future, long-term in a sense, future homeownership. And I, I just throw that out for discussion, I'm curious, from the staff or anybody else, their thoughts on that option.
So just real quickly, I think what Willie is talking about is, somebody builds a duplex, it doesn't have to be a rental, the city allows a property line to be inserted between those two units to allow homeownership of either of those units. So it's not necessarily gonna be a rental, it's not necessarily gonna be owner-occupied, but the option... but the options there, the city allows that property line to be put right down the middle.
Is it possible to require that, or does that get messy?
Maybe we can bring back some information at the next meeting.
That's fine, I'm just curious about how that works out. But I like the idea of encouraging homeownership, I think that's good.
Anything else?
A motion to defer?
Yeah, okay, so is there a motion to, what we had generally talked about was, not voting on this tonight, but giving us more time to kind of think through what we've heard and stuff, that would be a motion to defer to another meeting, is there that motion or some other motion?
I would make a motion to defer.
I second.
Is that specific enough for, all right. Any discussion on that motion?
Do we need to talk about when we're deferring it to?
Specific date would be.
We do need a specific date, okay.
October.
So, defer to the October meeting?
Six.
So, just.
Are we having an October meeting?
Yes.
Oh, that we're going to get a month off.
Ready to vote?
Can I, can I get some clarity on what that means? So, we're going to defer and discuss again in October?
Mm-hmm.
And then, will we vote in October, or we will maybe vote in another future meeting?
Commission can decide what to do in October, it will definitely be discussing it again, but it'll be up to the commission what to do with it at that point.
But we could, if we felt necessary, motion to defer or motion to, like, we have flexibility of what to do.
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
I think if we defer until October, it just gives us time to read the other comments that did come in, it gives us our due diligence, and then we can discuss more in October and possibly vote then.
All right, so the motion is to defer in October, and it's seconded, any other conversation on the motion? Go ahead.
Mr. Lally?
Aye.
Ms. Nelson?
Aye.
Ms. Heron?
Aye.
Mr. Brooks?
Aye.
Mr. Cow?
Aye.
Mr. Nager?
Aye.
Ms. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Hanen?
Aye.
Motion has been passed, and the topic will be deferred till October.
That concludes our action items. Next is our report from the Standing Committee for Housing. Commissioner Calp?
I will be brief. The committee did meet on September 3rd, and at that meeting, we discussed, first of all, the comments made by city council members at the August 21 Policy and Finance Committee meeting. That committee was brought up to date with the revised recommendation of the Housing Committee that duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes be allowed in the R1 and R2 districts as conditional uses only. We also advised the Policy Committee that the public hearing on the recommended amendment would be September 15th. We spent a little bit of time talking about the large number of permitted uses, special uses, and conditional uses that are currently allowed under the Development Code in the R1 and R2 districts, and it was a bit of an eye-opener, I think, for some, that in excess of a couple dozen conditional uses already existed, and maybe more significant, the number of permitted uses and special uses, which I'll remind you all, special uses are of right if you meet the conditions that are set out in the Development Code. There is no notice, correct, Mike, on a special use, there is no notice to anybody, just as there is in of right project or undertaking. So, we already have quite a few provisions in the Development Code where my neighbor can change the use of her property without any notice to me, without coming to the Planning Commission, and without going to the City Council. They can, they could start a church next door, they could start a school next door. You've seen the list, it's in the memo that Mike put together, shared tonight, there's a lot of things that can be done besides single-family housing in single-family zone property, so. Anyway, we spent a little time looking at that, and then we also signed off on the options that Mike presented in his memo, the table of potential outcomes of the, for expanding the duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and I appreciate the staff noting in the memo that the position of the Housing Committee was the B1 option, which is no additional standards or qualification or guidelines associated with the amendment. That's important. And then, finally, the committee talked about future meetings. The Sunflower Association of Realtors has reached out to members of the committee and desiring to have a meeting with the committee and maybe some ongoing relationship with the committee, which is all good, that's, we welcome their engagement with the committee. We may be also trying to bring in someone representing the Federal Home Loan Bank here at Topeka. We, I recently found out that the Federal Home Loan Bank has a very extensive affordable housing program, grant program, spending millions of dollars in the state of Kansas, including some projects on a yearly basis in Topeka. So, I think it's important for the committee to be more aware of what that Federal Home Loan Bank is doing, and see if there's any role that the Planning Commission, the city of Topeka, can play to encourage more projects to be undertaken in Topeka. And finally, talk about the possibility of having a representative of the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation meet with the Housing Committee. There've been recent public statements by the Housing Corporation about their concern that funding and program cuts by both the federal government and the state government are going to eliminate or greatly reduce first homeowner buyer programs, certainly multifamily housing projects. It's going to be much more difficult to find, to come up with the money for those projects in the future. So, that's it, in brief, Mr. Chairman.
Then, next is Communications to the Commission.
Commissioners, you will obviously have a meeting in October, there will be a couple zoning cases, another subdivision plat with an annexation attached to it, and obviously the duplex item. The only other thing for Communications is recognition of Commissioner Calp. This is Commissioner Calp's last meeting, he's used up all his time, so to speak, on the commission. I'll say a few things, and this is all genuine, Jim, this is, I swear. So, I just want to just let you know that, you know, your background as a land use attorney, I think was pretty important for this body and for staff. I think your expertise on zoning matters was appreciated. You obviously showed a willingness to ask questions, which I think is great for a planning commissioner, and I would say also importantly, you made a conscious effort when you made motions to state the reasons for it, which I think is helpful as we move things on to the governing body, it's helpful for the commission to state reasons for adoption, whether it be a zoning case or whatever, a comprehensive plan amendment, whatever that might be. So, I think you were really great at that. And I guess also, you know, just thanks for your willingness to serve, you know, this is, you know, you're all volunteers up here, and it's, you know, it's a big commitment, and, you know, we appreciate your willingness to serve on the commission. I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything, but I will hand this over to Jim.
Can I say a couple?
Absolutely, Mike.
So, I want to say a few things in recognition of Jim Calp. I moved to Kansas more than 12 years ago, and worked for a different community for a while, and I was talking to someone about, I had some questions about Kansas law, and I was talking to someone, he said, you should talk to Jim Calp, he is the expert on Kansas law, land use law. Jim probably doesn't remember this. But anyway, I called Jim and had a good conversation, learned quite a bit, and then after that, I attended a conference or something in Wichita, I believe it was, and Jim spoke at a conference, had a session, that was educational. Jim has worked in other communities as an advisor, he's worked as a member of a planning team, putting together plans and zoning codes and other, I'm sure other ordinances as well. And one thing about Jim is that's obvious from being on the commission, is he definitely reads the material, and he remembers the details, and he does find the things that aren't quite right, points those out, and that's great. But, you know, very impressive that he has the aptitude to do all that. So, he's been a great member of the Planning Commission, and I want to thank him for his service.
And if I can, I just want to say a few moments, too. I've really enjoyed serving along Commissioner Calp, I feel like I've become a better planning commissioner, I feel like a better city advocate, I feel like my depth for just understanding, planning, real estate, even just history around planning and zoning really spurred out of a lot of our conversations, and I, like, he goes above and beyond in everything he does, and so whenever you speak, I listen up, not that I don't listen to everybody, but he always just provides so much value, even when it's things that I'm like, you might as well be speaking another language, I pay attention because I've learned so much from being around you, serving on the Housing Committee together, just, I see your passion, and I just respects, I respect you highly, and it's been such an honor to serve alongside you, and it's definitely going to be an absence felt when you're not sitting here. So, thank you so much for not only just your service, but just the standard that you set as a commissioner.
Well, I ought to leave it at that, but of course I won't. I appreciate that you all have indulged me in lengthy and frequent questions and comments, and I know it's probably, at times, pull your hair out, but I really did not intend to ever abuse the, those comments or make something out of nothing. You know, this is, I've served a total of 12 years on the Topeka Planning Commission, and this is the last meeting. I do want to, while I have a microphone, want to in particular thank Donna Ray, when she was chair in creating the Housing Committee and in appointing me to the, to that committee, I appreciate that very much. And I appreciate, not single people out too much, but the members of the Housing Committee that have worked, put in a lot of effort over the last, since the Housing Committee was created, Delmetrias, Willie, Katie, you know, and Will, Mr. Chairman, who were a member of the original Housing Committee. And it's, we've had a lot of meetings, and I know it's, people have had to work things into their schedule and make commitments, and I pretty consistently gave people readings, you know, material to read, and I'm sure they did sometimes, at least read the headlines or some of the, some of the comments. And just for a moment on housing, and I don't want to dwell too much on this, but there's both a personal and professional interest in housing, and I've lived in this community In my career, I cannot think of a single city or county that I worked with over a long career that did not have a significant housing problem. I mean, I can't think of, I stayed away from Johnson County, okay, I didn't, I didn't work in Johnson County, but, so it's fairly safe to say that everywhere else I worked, there was a problem. It was either quality or quantity of housing, or unfortunately, in many cases, it was both quality and quantity housing. And that, that has such a broad impact upon a community, it not only stifles economic growth and prosperity, it also, and most importantly, it affects the quality of life of people, quality of life of citizens. And so, it's very important to me, again, both professionally and, excuse me, personally, that we do all we can, I've tried to do all I can, to see that the housing situation in Topeka, which I consider a crisis, whether anybody else does or not, I consider it a crisis that needs to be addressed. The idea that, you know, any citizen in this community is living in an unsafe, unhealthy dwelling is an embarrassment, and if the city doesn't do everything it can to address those situations, then it should be ashamed of itself, so. There's a lot of work to be done, so. Last thing, Mr. Chairman, when I would work with, one of the things I did working with city and counties was, I put on a lot of workshops over the years for planning commissioners, and sometimes for elected officials, but the Planning Commission workshops were always the most gratifying, and I would always tell people to remember, and I would ask the members of the Planning Commission here to always remember just how significant, how important the work is that the Planning Commission does. Planning commissioners and the staff play a critical role in a city's ability to regulate what people can and cannot do with their own property. I mean, that's just an extraordinary power, you know, you step back and think about it, you know, we're telling people what they can, we did that tonight, we're telling people, we're part of the process, okay, but a critical part of the process, in telling people what they can do with their land. And that goes, it carries great responsibility, not just to respect the private property rights of an applicant, but also to identify and articulate what the community interest is, you know, what, what is, how does a particular proposal affect the quality of life of people in the community? It's really, you don't want to, you don't want to underestimate the significance of the role you play, you know, it's, it's an important job, and I appreciate what each and every one of you do and have done and will continue to do. On the subject of housing here, you know, I don't know how things are going to play out, but I will be comfortable with knowing that you're going to apply your good judgment and best intentions to the subject, and, and I'm losing my voice, it's all good timing. But also, really, I know I've put a burden to the staff over the years, but it all pays the same, right? No, and I appreciate them in particular, so Dan and Mike, thank you. So, that's all, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Are there any other communications to the commission? All right, are there anyone who, or is there anyone who signed up for public comment, general public comment?
There is, I'm not sure if they spoke already regarding the zoning duplex to rezone the amendment.
Then, so the next thing on our list is general public comment, sounds like some folks may have signed up for that, maybe mistakenly, and they may have spoken before, but if you did speak, or if you did sign up for public comment and do want to speak for general public comment, now is that time. Seeing no one. Seeing no one, that is the last item on our agenda for tonight, so we will adjourn.